Bienvenido a la audiencia. ¿Es Run? Espero que vea lo que digo. Bueno, aprecio que estés aquí esta mañana. Vamos a empezar y a orar. Padre y Padre Santo, le rogamos que el frío Espíritu Santo nos llene con comprensión, nos ayude como enseñamos y nos ayude como aprendemos por la gloria de Dios. Le pedimos esto en nombre de Cristo. Amén. Si recogen sus bibliotecas al libro de Genesis, capítulo 12, y también recogen en su libro una encuesta de profecía bíblica la página 15. Lo siento, hagamos que sea la página 14. Entonces vamos a empezar con la lección de la semana que viene. Quiero decir... Y esto no es un regañón. ¿Sabes qué es un regañón? Es un rechazo. Esto no es eso. Pero me gustaría decir que si deseamos convertirnos en poderosos en las escrituras, y espero que nuestra motivación esté correcta en eso, espero que queramos ser poderosos en las escrituras, no porque obtengamos reconocimiento por eso, sino porque estarán en un lugar donde Dios nos usará de una manera mayor. Pero si deseamos obtener una comprensión completa o una buena comprensión de la palabra de Dios, la palabra entera de Dios, de Genesis a la revelación, tener un buen conocimiento de ello, entonces necesitamos desarrollar, y estoy seguro de que ya lo has hecho, pero déjame decirlo para que sepas lo que he dicho. Necesitamos desarrollar un interés más profundo en el estudio de las escrituras que solo lo que recibimos en este salón de clase dos domingos por semana. Si realmente quieres desarrollarte en una comprensión de las escrituras en primer lugar, necesitas deshacerte de mí y conseguir otro maestro. Necesitas conseguir un maestro mejor que yo. Pero para realmente entender y desarrollar y crecer, debe haber una disciplina personal, interna, para estudiar la palabra de Dios. No hay sustituto para leer la palabra de Dios. Quiero decir, leer lentamente, atentamente, atentamente, y realmente prestar atención. Ahora, puede que no tengas el problema que tengo cuando leo las escrituras, pero tengo que levantarme porque voy a leer las escrituras y cuando llegue al final del capítulo estaba pensando en algo más mientras leía. No me disculpes de no ser capaz de multitasking porque puedo. Puedo leer y pensar en algo más al mismo tiempo. No sé cuántas veces he tenido la experiencia de que tenía que parar, volver al primer capítulo, orar una oración de confesión y pedirle a Dios que me ayude y leer ese capítulo de nuevo, realmente prestando atención a lo que están diciendo las escrituras. Para leerlo, ser como una gomita y absorberlo, memorizarlo, meditar sobre él, disfrutarlo. Alguien dice: "Pero su placer está en la ley del Señor". Y literalmente vivir en ella, como dice Mateo 4:4, vivir en la palabra de Dios. Ahora, si vamos a vivir en algo, va a tomar tiempo. Algunas personas viven en su auto porque van a lugares. Tienen que pasar tiempo de esa manera. Y me gustaría decir que hay algunos factores de importancia en el estudio de las escrituras santas. Vamos a entrar en el capítulo 12 en un momento de Genesis. Pero esto es solo algo de fondo que estamos poniendo aquí en la mesa. Factores de importancia en el estudio de las escrituras santas son lugares, y personas, y el propósito, y los principios. Cuando digo principios, quiero decir principios por los que Dios trabaja. lugares, por ejemplo, la Biblia dice en Genesis 1:1, en el comienzo Dios creó el cielo y la tierra. Esos son lugares. Y luego en el capítulo 1, en el versículo 26, Dios dijo: "Déjennos hacer a la humanidad". Así que aquí tenemos a la persona. Déjennos hacer a la humanidad. Y luego hay el propósito. En ese mismo Genesis 1:26, dice: "Déjennos hacer a la humanidad en nuestra imagen y que ellos tengan dominio". Y así es el propósito por el que Dios nos creó. Y luego llegamos a los principios por los que Dios trabaja. Nunca olvidaré cuando leí la Biblia la primera vez y cuando llegué al libro de Levíticas. He hecho referencia a esto antes y probablemente lo haré muchas más veces en el futuro. Cuando llegué al libro de Levíticas, todas las ofertas y las fiestas y todas las formas en que se comportaban en y alrededor de los tabernaclos que Dios estableció a través de Moisés y el libro de Ecdex. Cuando leía eso, no podía ver la imagen. Estaba pensando: "¿Cómo y por qué son todos estos detalles y cosas que son casi inimaginables?" La purificación del sacerdote y todas estas cosas. Pensé como un niño leyendo las escrituras la primera vez: "¿Por qué es esto importante?" Y un día descubrí por qué. En el capítulo 103 y el versículo 7, si quieres escribir esa referencia en tu notebook. En el capítulo 103 y el versículo 7, la Biblia dice: "Hizo saber sus formas a los hijos de Israel". Y luego obtuve la imagen. No importa si o no entiendo por qué Dios hizo todas estas cosas particulares y específicas en el libro de Levíticas. No importa. El hecho es que es así como Dios decidió que se hiciera. Hizo saber sus formas. Y eso es lo que tenemos en el Pentágono. El Pentágono, cinco libros, los primeros cinco libros de la Biblia, los libros de la ley, escritos por Moisés, Genesis, Exodus, Levíticas, Números y Dúrrolónimo. Llegamos a este pasaje y nos damos cuenta de que Dios está revelando a Moisés y a través de Moisés lo que tiene en cuenta su forma específica de hacer cosas. Ahora, cuando llegamos al cielo y caminamos por las calles de oro y vamos por la Avenida de la Aleluya y cruzamos la calle de la bendición del Señor, vamos a apreciar más profundamente por qué Dios decidió que fuera así. Ahora, eso no está en la Biblia. Las calles de oro están en la Biblia. Solo estoy usando mi imaginación aquí solo para mí. Pero es una cosa maravillosa y gloriosa saber que eso es lo que Dios está haciendo en toda la palabra de Dios. Hizo saber sus formas a Moisés. Los principios son los principios de conducta por los que Dios trabaja. Ahora, solo piensa en esto. En Ecdex, capítulo 25 y versículo 9, Dios está dando, ha dado a Moisés instrucciones para construir el tabernacle en la selva. Y en ese pasaje, le dice a Moisés que asegure que todo se hace de acuerdo con el patrón. Esto me llegó a casa como un niño. Cuando mi padre fue a trabajar y me dijo el día anterior: "¿Por qué voy a trabajar mañana? Quiero que tú muestres el jardín y esta es la forma en que quiero que lo hagas". Bueno, teníamos uno de esos mowers de ruedas. Te presionas el mower y la rueda gira la rueda y trae el hierro a través de una espada dura y lo corta. Pero ¿sabes lo que hice? Cuando salí a muerer y lo estaba haciendo exactamente como mi padre dijo, no te creerás esto, pero descubrí una mejor forma de hacerlo. Y así lo hice de mi manera. Y cuando mi padre regresó de trabajo, era evidente que no lo había hecho de su manera. Y así me enseñó una lección. Él me enseñó una lección. Ahora, esto es verdad. Si esto es verdad de la humanidad, esto es mucho más verdadero de Dios y la importancia de la forma en que Dios hace las cosas. Ahora, desgraciadamente, los hijos de Israel no continuaron haciendo cosas de la forma en que Dios dijo. Y así sufrieron como nación. Ahora, lo que es verdad de Israel es también verdad de nuestra vida de iglesia hoy en día. En el Nuevo Testamento, no tenemos el tabernacle, no tenemos los sacrificios y no hacemos cosas como hicieron en el Antiguo Testamento. Pero hoy en el Nuevo Testamento hacemos cosas de acuerdo con la palabra de Dios a través de iglesias. Y estoy cuidado cuando digo eso. Hay la forma plural y la forma singular de decir "iglesia". La forma singular es decir "iglesia", "la iglesia". Y la forma plural es decir "las iglesias". Ahora, hoy no tenemos "la iglesia". Hubo un tiempo en Jerusalén, cuando la primera iglesia bártica no existía, solo había una iglesia. Dijeron: "Espera un momento, preador. ¿Qué quieres decir cuando dices la primera iglesia bártica?" Bueno, solo piensa en eso. No podía haber sido una iglesia católica. No iban a venir durante 300 años. Y no podía haber sido una iglesia protestante. No iban a venir durante 1500 años. Y esas personas creen en lo que creemos. Y por lo tanto, eran bárticos y somos bárticos. Y esa es una de las razones por las que somos bárticos hoy. Ahora, hay muchas iglesias allá afuera, con muchos nombres y denominaciones diferentes. Pero no son iglesias escriturales. Han elegido hacer cosas de la manera de la humanidad en lugar de la manera de Dios y por lo tanto han desviado. Un ejemplo. El Señor Jesús dice, la Biblia dice que el Señor Jesús es el head de la iglesia. Hay un grupo de profesiónes cristianos y tienen otro líder. Su nombre es el Pope. Y luego hay otros fundadores de diferentes denominaciones y tienen su head honcho. Y Cristo no es el head de la iglesia. Ahora, tú y yo como bárticos aquí en Tiptonia Báticos, por ejemplo, no tenemos una sede. Ahora, yo solía ser un bártico sur cuando era joven y todavía tengo un gran respeto por los bárticos conservadores del sur. No puedo ser uno de ellos ahora por razones específicas y personales. Pero solo para pensar en lo que eramos entonces. Había un grupo de decones que se reunieron y dijeron: "Demos nuestro pastor un viaje a la tierra santa". Y así todos se unieron. Esto sería una cosa maravillosa de hacer. Y el pastor estaba emocionado. Y así la congregación dijo que lo enviarían a la tierra santa. Dijeron: "Pero ahora queremos enviar a dos o tres decones con ustedes". Y él dijo: "Bueno, está bien, pero ¿por qué los quieres llevar conmigo?" Es porque Nashville es una gran ciudad y tememos que puedan perderse. Nashville no es la tierra santa. Bueno, pero de todos modos, qué maravilloso es saber que podemos hacer el trabajo de Dios de la manera de Dios y siempre que Israel estaba haciendo el trabajo de Dios de la manera de Dios, todo estaba bien. Pero luego a lo largo del Antiguo Testamento vemos los resultados trágicos de cómo tenían sus propias ideas sobre las cosas. Y vamos a entrar en esas cosas mientras seguimos en nuestro estudio de todas las escrituras. Pero hemos cambiado el head de la iglesia, muchos de ellos lo han hecho. Y hemos cambiado el evangelio. ¿Recuerdas que Paul dijo en Galates, capítulo 1, que estaba en contra de otro evangelio? Y tenemos un par de cosas que han sido cambiadas. Algunas iglesias tienen lo que llaman sacramentoalismo en lugar del evangelio. ¿Qué es sacramentoalismo? El sacramentoalismo es cuando pones un sacrament en lugar del evangelio. Y un ejemplo de esto es la masa de la iglesia católica romana. Ahora, tienen siete sacramentos. Y no vamos a entrar en todo eso. Pero incluso los protestantes hoy que salieron de la iglesia católica habiendo protestado en contra de la iglesia católica, ironicamente, cuando salieron trajeron tanto de la doctrina de la iglesia católica en práctica. Y lo encuentras en iglesias protestantes hoy, como la regeneración baptísima o la enseñanza de que el bátismo lava tus pecados. No tenemos un sacrament como bárticos. Tenemos ordenances. Una ordenanza del supertienda del Señor y el bátito no es más que un símbolo y una recordación de lo que Cristo ha hecho. Pero si miramos a ese supertienda del Señor como un sacrament, entonces creemos que al observar ese sacrament, que eso es parte de nuestra salvación. Pero nada podría estar más allá de la verdad. Ese es otro evangelio. Y luego hay otra cosa que se enseña. Y eso es sacerdotalismo. Estoy girando mi voz porque estoy acostumbrado a decir esto en español. Pero este es un sacerdote. No hay sacerdotes en la verdadera iglesia del Señor Jesús Cristo. Ese oficio pertenece al Antiguo Testamento exclusivamente. En lugar del sacerdote, ahora tenemos pastores. Tenemos pastores. Y cualquiera que sea miembro de una iglesia que tenga sacerdotes en lugar de pastores no es miembro de una iglesia escritural. Cualquiera que sea miembro de una iglesia que practique sacramentoalismo no es miembro de una verdadera iglesia escritural. Por lo tanto, hay muchas iglesias allá afuera que tienen un nombre de "iglesia", y sin embargo, no son iglesias escriturales porque su doctrina y su práctica no reflejan la enseñanza del Nuevo Testamento. Ahora, en un nutshell, esto te da un breve resumen que dice: "Wow, tu maestro es un bártico". No me importa si dices que soy un bártico en la tierra. Pero el problema con los bárticos es el hecho de que los bárticos hoy han cambiado y están cambiando. Y no sé si hay una iglesia en el mundo en la que prefiero ser miembro de que la Iglesia Bática de Tiptonia. Y puedo venir aquí con buena conciencia. Puedo entrar en esta iglesia con buena conciencia sabiendo que esto está en la voluntad de Dios y estamos practicando cosas de acuerdo con la palabra de Dios. Ahora, en Genesis, capítulo número 12, tenemos la llamada y la promesa de la covenia, en lugar de... La llamada llegó en el capítulo anterior. Pero tenemos la covenia que Dios hizo con Abraham. Ahora, si tienes tiempo para una pequeña broma más, la compartiré contigo. Debemos saber la diferencia entre Abraham y opium. ¿Sabes qué es el opium? El opium proviene de la semilla de popa. Extraen el jugo de la semilla de popa. Así que el opium es el jugo de la popa. Y Abraham es el popa del jugo. Bueno, ahora no vamos a tener más levantamiento hoy, creo. Vamos a entrar directo en las escrituras. Este es un texto primordial o básico y fundamental de la escritura aquí en Genesis, capítulo 12. Versos 1, 2 y 3. Y sé que has oído esto en la escuela de domingo y en el predicio del pastor. Y ustedes conocen estos versos muy bien. Ahora, el Señor había dicho a Abraham:[1271.62][1272.42]"Lleva a ti fuera de tu país y de tu kindred". Ahora, él vivió en Ur, el Chaldees, y este era el lugar donde el sol y la luna se adoraban. Así que nació y se crió en absoluto paganismo. Y Dios bajó y habló a este hombre, Abraham, su nombre que luego cambió a Abraham. Dios habló a Abraham. El Señor había dicho eso. Pero Dios le está diciendo que deje a su familia y vaya a una tierra que él no sabe dónde va. Solo va a seguir la dirección de Dios. Dios lo va a llevar. Y así, en el camino, su padre, Tira, versículo 31 de el capítulo 11. "Y Tira tomó a Abraham, su hijo, y a la hija de Haron, su hijo, y a Saurea, su hija, su hijo, Abraham's esposa. Y ellos fueron con ellos desde Ur, el Chaldees, a ir a la tierra de Canaán. Y ellos llegaron a Haron y vivieron allí". Ahora, es muy importante darnos cuenta de que una de las formas en que Dios trabaja es que tiene formas específicas y cosas específicas que dijo. Y debemos adherirnos a los mandos de Dios y a la forma en que dijo hacerlo. Pero Tira tomó a Abraham. Ahora, Tira, no sé dónde obtuvo la idea. Pero todavía está vivo, el padre de Abraham. Y tenía 70 años cuando comenzó Abraham. Y ahora esto no es lo que Dios dijo. Dios dijo: "Lleva fuera de tu país y de tu kindred y de la casa de tu padre hasta una tierra que te mostraré". Aparentemente, Dios detiene a este grupo en Harón. No ahora los está llevando. Han llegado a un punto de paro. Y cada vez que tú y yo lleguemos a un punto de paro en nuestras vidas, necesitamos parar y reflexionar y pensar qué está pasando en mi vida y ser oradores y buscar las escrituras y obtener dirección de Dios. La Biblia dice en Genesis 11:32: "Y los días de Tira fueron doscientos y cinco años; y Tira murió en Harón". Bueno, esta diversion y este retraso ya han sido cuidados. Una razón por la que no progresamos en las cosas de Dios es porque hay diversiones y hay retrasos, y estas cosas tienen que ser cuidadas. Dios no está contento con ellos. Ahora, el Señor había dicho a Abraham: "Lleva fuera de tu país y de tu kindred y de la casa de tu padre hasta una tierra que te mostraré. Y yo te haré una gran nación". Ahora, tal vez Abraham o Abraham está tomando la cabeza en este punto. No sé cómo va a ser porque ya estoy en años y no tengo un hijo. "Yo te haré una gran nación y te bendeciré y haré que tu nombre sea grande y tú serás una bendición". Ahora, esto es lo que Dios está prometiendo hacer con este antiguo pagan. Fue a un lugar idólatras, pagan y eligió a un hombre de ese lugar y dijo: "Sigueme, te voy a llevar a otro lugar". Versículo 3: "Y yo te bendeciré a los que te bendecen". Wow. Esto tiene un gran significado. Quiero decir en este punto que la única forma de entender las escrituras proféticas de los dos Antiguo y Nuevo Testamentos es entender lo que Dios está haciendo con la nación de Israel. Dios no solo está eligiendo a Abraham de Ur, el Chaldees, sino que está eligiendo una nación. Dios ya tiene en mente lo que va a hacer, incluso hasta los detalles. Y da gracia a un hombre llamado Abraham que no tenía pensamientos de Dios. Adoraba al sol y la luna. Pero mientras lo lleva, dice: "Voy a te bendecir, te haré una gran nación, te haré una bendición". Y esto es tan importante hasta que si alguien entra en tu camino para detener eso, voy a estar en su camino. "Yo te bendeciré a los que te bendecen, yo les haré un castigo que te castigue". Ahora, esta es una promesa de dos dimensiones, una positiva y una negativa promesa. Yo te bendeciré, yo les haré un castigo, dependiendo de si les bendecen a Abraham, dependiendo de si les castigan a Abraham. Ahora, los antisemitanos hoy han elegido la castiga de Dios sobre ellos. Lo que están haciendo en las calles de nuestra nación y en las universidades de nuestra nación y en todo el mundo, hay una creciente cantidad de odio de judíos. Y lo que están haciendo es simplemente eligiendo para ellos mismos que van a ser una castiga de Dios. Y lo que están haciendo no va a cambiar Dios en un punto. No va a cambiar la relación de Dios con la nación de Israel. No va a cambiar la promesa de Dios. Y Dios no está en el cielo, tomando sus dedos diciendo: "¿Qué voy a hacer ahora?" Nosotros pertenecemos al Señor del universo, quien sabe todo, quien tiene todo poder. ¿No es maravilloso que estemos en ese grupo extremadamente minoritario de la población mundial que oyeron la Biblia y creyeron la Biblia? Somos de las personas que él ha elegido y hemos llegado a los lugares. Ahora, sé que puedes ser salvado en cualquier lugar del mundo donde escuches la Biblia y la Biblia nos dice que vayamos y escuchen la Biblia en todo el mundo. Pero estoy feliz de haber nacido en la cumbre de Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Y viví en una pequeña comunidad llamada Peterson. Déjame decirte algo sobre mi nacimiento y mis primeros días. Uno es el hecho de que nací a una madre que oró y leí la Biblia y creyó a Dios. Ella era un metodista. Su padre era un predicador metodista. Y mi padre era un drogado. No era nada. Y ese predicador metodista, que era su pastor, evidentemente era un hombre de Dios. Y dijo a mi madre, dijo: "Sé que eres un metodista y sé que tu esposo no es nada, pero sé que tu esposo dice que prefiere ir a la iglesia bártica por alguna razón". Y el predicador metodista dijo a mamá, dijo: "Te recomendaría que vayas a unirte a la iglesia bártica solo para que tengas una base para llegar a tu esposo". Y ella hizo exactamente eso. No sé cómo nos fuimos de eso. No sé dónde estaba con eso. Pero dejemos de lado y sigamos con lo que estamos hablando. Dijo: "Yo te bendeciré a los que te bendecen, yo les haré un castigo que te castigue". Y así hay judíos en todo el mundo. Ahora sé de qué estaba hablando. Cuando nací en su familia, su esposo no era... her husband was not a man of God, but she was a woman of God. And she read the Bible and she prayed. And she taught me about God. When I was so young, I couldn't understand. But later, when I got old enough that I could understand, well, it all came together. And she led me to Christ when I was seven years old. I know that's extremely young, but it's real in my heart and in my life. And God says, "I will bless them that bless thee and curse them that curse thee." So, whether or not you want to be blessed or cursed depends in this case on whether or not you want to be a friend to Israel. Verse number three, "And I will bless them that bless thee and curse them that curse thee. And in thee, in you, Abraham, in your descendants, in the nation that I'm going to procreate by, that I'm going to create by means of my purpose and my will, in thee shall all families of the earth be blessed." Now, it doesn't matter if you're a gringo or a Mexican. It doesn't matter if you're a Jew or a Gentile. It doesn't matter what color your skin is or what language you speak. This is the promise of God. All families of thee shall be blessed. Now, please see the connection. We started off with Genesis 3:15, where God spoke to the serpent, to Satan in the serpent. And God said, "I will..." "The seed of the woman and your seed are going to be in conflict." And so, here we have progressively up until this point, the line of the seed of the woman, not Cain but Seth, and all of those that we have listed in our book there. And we come up, and now we are at the time of Abraham. Now, none of the antecedent patriarchs fulfill the promise of Genesis 3:15. But now, what is a patriarch? According to your glossary in the back of your book, a patriarch is the father of a family or the founder of a nation or a tribe. Now, we come to a new kind of patriarch, the antecedent before the flood and after the flood, all the way up through Tyra, or the antecedent patriarchs. And their names were significant and had meaning that were prophetic of the coming of the fulfillment of Genesis 3:15. And yet, we have here Abraham, who is the next in line. And he is established by God as being the father, the puppy of the Jews. Okay? He is established as the father of the nation of Israel. Now, there's something very important. I wish I could put this clock in reverse. Man, I don't know. One is that when we get here on Saturday morning, that thing speeds up. That thing speeds up. I think it's Mark's fault because he was running late and he broke the speed limit to get here. And he came in and it affected my watch and sped it up. But anyway, Abraham, or Abram, as he is called at this point, is the next in line, leading all the way up to the fulfillment of the seed of the woman. Didn't say seeds. We've seen several all the way through, but just one seed. And that, of course, was fulfilled in the person of the Lord Jesus Christ. Okay. Now, there are several things about the life of Abraham that are of great importance. There were some low points in his life. And there were some high points in his life. And we're gonna recognize some of them in our study about Abraham this morning. Low points and high points. Now, what God did with Abraham was to make a covenant with Abraham. I think I've already mentioned this. There is a difference between a covenant and a contract. And I hope this will help us to understand more about our personal individual salvation before the Lord. What is the difference between a covenant and a contract? A covenant is what God decides and what God does. And there is nothing that the person to whom that covenant is made, nothing that we can do to change that. A contract is an agreement between two different parties. Either one of the parties can renig on the contract. And they can fail to keep the contract. But a covenant is what God has decided to do in his relation to Abraham and Abraham's descendants. It is a covenant. Now, think about this. Even though Abraham recently come out of idolatry, fails in so many ways in his new experience with the one and only, true and living, holy, almighty, everywhere-present, all-knowing God of the universe. My, what a contrast between God and Abraham. And God establishes a rule with Abraham, as if to say, "Abraham, I've already made up my mind. This is what I'm gonna do." Now, it doesn't matter how faithful Abraham is or isn't. It isn't going to change God's mind. Now, you in raising families and in life, you men, have come to the place in your life where you've made decisions. Many times, you've made those decisions with a complete agreement with your wife. And that's wonderful. But many times, you've made those decisions based on the fact that you knew what was best for your life and your family. And you made up your mind, "This is what I'm gonna do. This is it." Joshua was such a man as that. He said, "As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." And so, this is what God does in making a covenant. He made that covenant with Abraham. Now, I wanna fast forward a little bit and let you know I do believe in the absolute sovereignty of God. And I do believe in the innate responsibility of man. I cannot reconcile those two things. I've never known anybody that could. I do believe that one day in glory, he'll reveal them to us. Remember, Deuteronomy 29, verse 29, tells us that God reveals things to us and he keeps things secret to himself. Now, as long as God has secret things that we don't understand, secret things that we cannot add up, we can't put together, then we have the blessing of knowing in whom we have believed. As Paul said, "I'm persuaded that he is able to keep that against that day." Now, a lot of things in the Bible that we don't understand, but we know that God is in charge. And we know that we have believed him. We've trusted him. And so, what else matters? I mean, when I was a little boy, I didn't understand everything that was going on, but I knew that my dad was driving the car. And I just sat back and enjoyed the ride. And that's where we are as Christians. Now, I'm saying that the fact that Abraham was not faithful in everything did not change God's mind about what he was going to do. And it has been that way in our Christian life since we've been saved. We haven't been perfect. But has that changed God's mind as to whether or not he loves us? And as to whether or not he has accepted the blood of Christ in exchange in our place to wash our sins away? God hasn't changed his mind. And sometimes, we're criticized for believing in eternal security. What other kind of security can there be? If it isn't eternal, it isn't security. But God's covenant with us, that if we will come in repentance and faith and trust Christ as our Savior, that settles it. Somebody said, "God said it. I believe it." And that settles it. Somebody else said, "No. God said it. That settles it." And so, this is where Abraham is. Now, he went down into Canaan as God had directed him. But the problem was, when he got down there, there was a famine. And so, he didn't stop in Canaan. Because of unbelief, he went on further south to Egypt, where many believe that's where he picked up Hagar. And that was one of the problems that he ran into. Now, while in Egypt, he was afraid for his life, apparently, his wife, Sariah, was a very beautiful lady. Very beautiful. My imagination wrecks me. I can't imagine what Eve may have looked like, or even Adam, even though men don't retract men. Eve must have been a very beautiful woman before the falling sand. And Sariah must have been an extremely beautiful woman. But he told her, "Don't tell these people you're my wife. Tell them you're my sister because I'm afraid they're gonna take you and kill me." My, what an unbelieving thing. God had already promised to make of him a great nation. But you know, if we could go back and put ourselves in his place, then that would be another thing. So, we see that there was another episode in Genesis, chapter 20, verses 1 to 18, in which he told Abimelech, the king of Gerar, that she was his sister. And this came later. It seems to me like through these two incidences, Satan is trying to disqualify Eve from being the chosen mother of the nation of Israel. We have seen other times in these chapters in the book of Genesis in which God is leading, and yet Satan is trying to hedge him off or cut him off. And he does that thing in our lives too. And we need to have a complete faith in God. There were other low points in the life of Abraham, such as in chapter 16, "Hagar begat Ishmael." That clearly was not the will of God. Clearly not the will of God. And later, it must have been a sad occasion in his life, after Isaac was born, that Hagar and Ishmael were sent away. And being Ishmael, being a descendant of Abraham, God blessed him too. God blessed him too. And there probably more and more evidence today than there are Jews in the world. So, these are low points in the life of Abraham. But low points does not cancel the covenant. Had it been a contract, sacramentalism is a contract. "God, you do your part. I'll do mine." Sacramentalism. And then, sacerdotalism. "I'll do it my way." But in reality, what a wonderful thing it is to know that low points in our lives does not cancel out whether or not we have been saved. Now, there are high points in the life of Abraham. One of the high points was in chapter 13, when he realized that he was in the wrong place and had gone too far. He went back to the land of Canaan. And then, we have a separation from Lot. Now, that's a good point. Lot does not share the values that Abraham does. And so, God arranged the means whereby these two were separated. And then, he had victory over the warring kings in chapter 14. That took Lot as a captive. And during this time, he met a man by the name of Melchizedek. So, if you would write this in your notebook, Melchizedek, chapter 14, verses 18 to 20. And we're gonna take the time to read that. And if I keep you a little longer in this first session this morning, probably I'll let you out a little early in the second session. But I have to get to a good stopping place before we can have a break, okay? And in chapter 14, and in verse 18, "And Melchizedek, king of Salem, brought forth bread and wine; and he was the priest of the Most High God. And he blessed him and said, 'Blessed be Abraham, of the Most High God, Possessor of heaven and earth! And blessed be the Most High God, which hath delivered thine enemies into thine hand, and he gave him tithes of all.'" This is the first mention of any kind of communion, the bread and the wine. This is typical of what's going to be practiced by the churches of our Lord in the future. Melchizedek is a mystery to a lot of people. They don't know who he was or how he fits into the picture. But you and I do not want Melchizedek to be a mystery to us. If we will believe exactly what the Bible says about Melchizedek, we will be satisfied in our minds who he was. So, with that in mind, if we will turn to the book of Hebrews, chapter 7. Hebrews, chapter 7. This is one of the beautiful things about the Holy Bible. And that is the fact that scripture explains scripture. The Bible is the best commentary on the Bible. And I like to do cross-references. I'll write and ready a passage, the side of passage in the New Testament or reference leading back to the Old Testament. See, now these tie together. Now, in chapter 7 and verse number 1, God tells us who Melchizedek was. Now, this Melchizedek, king of Salem. Now, Salem is a city of peace. And to say that he was king of Salem indicates as to who he was. But at the same time, this is, this place is the same place that became known later as Jerusalem. Jerusalem. And God puts a high priority on that city. It doesn't belong to the Muslim, Muslims. It doesn't belong to the Islamics. It belongs to the Jews. Literally, it belongs to God. And it has a great future in the word of God. Priest of the Most High God. Now, who is our priest today? Who is our priest? The Lord Jesus Christ. Hebrews chapter 4. "Let us come boldly to the throne of grace, that we may find grace and happiness in need, who met Abraham, returning from the slaughter of the kings, and blessed him, to whom Abraham gave a tenth of all, first being by interpretation." What is an interpretation? It is an explanation. So, what is God saying in this verse? He's saying, "I am going to..." Good morning, Daniel. "I'm going to bless you and make you a blessing." By interpretation, Melchizedek was the king of righteousness. Are you following with me there in Hebrews, chapter 7, verse number 2? He is the king of righteousness. Who else can fill that role other than the person of the Lord Jesus Christ? It should not be a mystery It should not be a mystery as to who Melchizedek is. And also, king of Salem, which is king of peace. In Isaiah, chapter 9, the Bible tells us that he is the prince of peace. A prince is the son of a king. A prince is a future king. The Lord Jesus Christ is not the king now, he has been rejected, but he's coming back. He right now is the Lamb of God. But when he comes the second time, he will be the king of kings and lord of lords, the king of righteousness, and after that, also, king of Salem, which is the king of peace. I'm saying, no, I'm not saying, this is saying, that to understand who Melchizedek was, recognize the description of his name. Verse number 3, "Without father, without mother." Now, I know that when the Lord Jesus came, he had the heavenly Father as his only Father, and he had his mother, Mary, as his earthly mother. But that happened many, many years after this was talking about Melchizedek. Melchizedek didn't have a father. Melchizedek did not come by natural procreation. He did not have a mother. And there's not anybody else in all of the world who could fit this role, other than the person of the Lord Jesus Christ. "Without descent, having neither beginning of days nor end of life, but made like unto the Son of God." And then, notice the present tense, "Abideth, a priest continually." That's present tense. This is saying that this person, Melchizedek, who was king of righteousness, king of peace, and without mother, without father, and so forth and so on, is still, even, right now, a priest continually. Like unto the Son of God, "abideth," right now, present tense, "a priest continually." Now, jump over to verse 11, in the same chapter 7 of the book of Hebrews. "If therefore perfection were by the Levitical priesthood, for under it the people received the law, what further need was there, that another priest should rise after the order of Melchizedek?" The Lord Jesus Christ could not fulfill the typology of Aaron as being the priest. And the reason is, because the Lord Jesus was from the tribe of Judah, he was not from the tribe of Levi. He was not a descendant of Aaron. He could not be a priest on earth in the nation of Israel. He has a higher calling, a much more important calling than that. Now, "What further need was there, that another priest should rise after the order of Melchizedek, and not be called after the order of Aaron?" Now, look down to verse 15. And it is yet far more evident for that, "After the solitude of Melchizedek, there ariseth another priest, who is made, not after the law of a carnal commandment, but after the power of an endless life. For he testifith," that's the Father speaking to the Son, "thou art a priest forever, after the order of Melchizedek." So, therefore, who was Melchizedek? None less, none other than the Lord Jesus Christ. Now, how can that be? How can that be? That can be, because in the Old Testament, there were theophanes. A theophany, if I'm spelling that correctly. A theophany is an appearance of Christ in a body before his incarnation. His incarnation occurred when Mary gave birth to Jesus, when she was conceived by the Holy Spirit. Now, that is a theophany. And in the, in the, in the Old Testament, you will also read this term, "Angel of the All caps in that word, "Lord." Translation of the word, Jehovah. A theophany, or an angel of the Lord. This occurred on occasions in the Old Testament, an angel of the Lord. There is another word that we use today to describe this, we call it a chrysophany. If I am indeed spelling that word correctly. Okay, a theophany and a chrysophany is the same thing. Theo means God, theology, the study of God. And chrysophany, of course, we know what Christ means, the Anointed One, that is the definition of the word Messiah, of the angel of the Lord. These are Old Testament appearances of Christ. And we're noticing today, according to the definitions given in the seventh chapter of the book of Hebrews, that Melchizedek is that theophany, that appearance. Now, whether or not Abraham recognized clearly, or not, who he was at that time, I don't know, but he had, he had to believe in something very, very important about Melchizedek, because he became the first tither. Now, he gave a tenth of all that he had, and that's what tithing is. Now, I've been a tither for many, many years. I started when, right after my dad got saved. And he got him a Bible, and he started going to church. He joined the church, he was baptized. And the box that my dad's big Bible came in, he wrote "tith" on it. And every Friday, when he got his paycheck, he'd take 10% of that, put it in that box, put it in his hat box on the Shippur Oath. That's where he used to keep his whiskey. I've seen him open that door and gurgle down, he'd put his thumb right there on that bottle, and he'd gurgle down, and he, he knew how to measure it out. He knew how many gurgles it would be for that. But then, when that was gone, he put the tith box in there. When that happened, I was just a little bitty boy. And I said, "Mama, get me a box and write 'tith' on it." And when I would have a little gift of money, or do something, or whatever, I'd say, "Now, how much is the tith?" And then, Mama would measure out my pennies, and that's what I would put in that box. And I would take it to some disco. I've been doing that by God's grace faithfully, ever since I was just a lad of a boy. The Bible says, "I will bless them that bless thee," and he will bless the tither. And my life has been blessed, so many ways, I can't tell you how many. But I'm not trying to make you a tither if you're not. If you are a tither, I'm ringing a bell, and you're, you know how God has blessed you. If you're not a tither, I'm not trying to convince you that you should be a tither. And it's not a legalistic thing, this happened long before the law. This is not under the law. This is something else. But anyway, he recognized who Melchizedek was, and how wonderful it is for us to know that Melchizedek is still interceding for us. What was a priest? A priest was an intercessor. And so, he has provided his blood. "These things write unto you, that you sin not; and if any man sinneth, we have an advocate with the Father, Jesus Christ the righteous." And he is the propitiation, the satisfaction, the shedding of blood for our sins, and not for our own, but also for the sins of the whole world. My, I have gone a solid hour. And your sitting down might possibly be getting very difficult. So, we're gonna take a break right now. Turn that machine off.
My posterior can no longer stand what my mind can concern.
Okay, as we continue in our setting, hopefully, we hope we hear this, this session as long as we were earlier. But I know you have other things to do, and I really appreciate your sacrifice of time on a Saturday morning. And I trust that the Lord will guide us as we study together, and we'll all learn something from the Word of God. We look at the low points in the life of Abraham, and that did not cancel out the covenant that God laid with him. And so, it is in our lives, God has made a covenant of saving grace, and we receive the Lord Jesus as our Savior by faith alone. And as a result of that, God keeps the covenant, and we don't have to worry about keeping our part of the contract. Now, we must realize, however, that there is in Abraham's heart a desire to do right and to serve the Lord, just as there is in your life and mine, even when we have a low point in our personal experience in the Christian life. It doesn't change the fact that we really love the Lord. And so many times, we have to come to God by means of 1 John 1:9. If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us our sins, and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness. And so, we come to the Lord in the time of our low points, and we say, "Lord, I really do love you. I'm so sorry that I have not been faithful in this occasion. Cleanse my heart and life, and help me to be all that I should be." Now, there are other high points in the life of Abraham. One was his refusal of the spoil. The king of Salem, who benefited from his victory over Chetel Ehrman, the king of Salomon, said, "Now, you, you take this spoil here." And he says, "No, I've already made up my mind before God, I'm not gonna take anything. I don't want you to be able to say that you made Abraham rich." Now, there is something very important in this principle by which God operates. And that is simply the fact that, as a tither, for example, what do I have to tithe? I have to tithe 100% of what God has given me. Now, some of you are in business, I want you to take me into your business as a partner. I want you to put up 100%. I'll give you back 10%, and I'll keep 90%. Is that a bad deal for me? No, that would be a bad deal for you. I can already see that Mark is not going to hire me as one of his carpenters. But that's exactly what God has done. God has put 100% into our hands, and he has asked 10% back, and we keep the 90%. That is not a bad deal. So, nobody can complain about tithing. Again, I'm gonna rehash what I've already said, I'm not trying to convince you to be a tither if you're not. I want God to do that, because that's where the blessing will come in. I can't bless you if you're tithing, but God can and will, as he said so in his Word. But suppose Abraham had received spoil from the king of Salomon. What kind of money would that have been? That would have been corrupt. That would have been filthy, that would have been dirty money. And then, he's gonna turn around and give 10% of that to God? In the book of Isaiah, the Scripture says, "He that geteth riches, and not by right, shall leave them in the midst of his days, and at his end shall be a fool." That's either Isaiah or Jeremiah, what is it, brother, brother Glenn? Okay, anyway, you know where the Scripture is. In Trenton, Georgia, there are more liquor stores than there are churches. It wasn't that way when I came to live in Trenton, some years ago, when I bought a house in Dade County. But that's such a shame, because the liquor business has a curse on it. And we won't get into all of that just now. But we need to earn our money honestly and justly, because we're gonna be giving 10% of that back to God, and God doesn't want our dirty money. God is perfectly righteous and holy in every aspect of his being. Now, another amazing thing, not just Melchizedek, but in the 18th chapter of the book of Genesis, God comes in disguised form and visits with Abraham to give him a promise that he's gonna have a son. Now, he had already tried to do it his way. At his wife's insistence, he went into the handmaid, Hagar, and Ishmael was born. Now, Isaac came along 13 years later. 13 years is a lot of time to think about. Man, is God going to do what he promised, or is he not? Man, I'm getting old. Well, not to worry Abraham, though you don't realize it, even though you're going to be 100 years old when Isaac is born, you're still going to live an additional 75 years, young man. And so, you're gonna have, you're gonna have another wife, you're gonna have another family group, after your wife, Sariah, is gone. By the way, her name was changed from Sariah to Sarah. And his name was changed from Abram to Abraham, at the time when God had an additional promise by saying, "You're going to be the father of many nations." Now, in chapter 21, verses 9 to 34, we have what I have described as the first Abraham Accord. Now, you've heard that term. President Trump has arranged an agreement between some Islamic nations and the nation of Israel, and what they're calling the Abraham Accords. Based on the fact that not only Isaac, but Ishmael were sons. And they're saying, "You guys are brothers, so lay down your hatchet, and let's get together, and let's all be friends." I love President Trump. I voted for him. I respect him. I think he's a highly intelligent man. He has made some very good decisions, even though everything that happens bad is his fault, according to what's going on. But anyway, the Abraham Accord cannot work. If all we have to say is that Ishmael and Isaac were both sons of Abraham, then maybe that could work out. But the problem is, there was conflict between Isaac and Ishmael. When Isaac was born, Ishmael, 13-year-old lad, made fun of him. There has always been enmity between the seed of a woman and the seed of a serpent. But God did something special with Isaac. The very same covenant that God made with Abraham, he repeated that covenant with Isaac. Now, here is an amazing thing. Here is where you and I sit into the, into the picture. And I say, "The Abraham Accord." I cannot prosper, cannot be an ongoing political agreement because of the differences. Sure, they were born of the same Father, Isaac and Ishmael. But at the same time, we have to take into account the fact that God made another promise to Abraham. He promised that in Thessalonians, all families of the earth be blessed, and that comes only through the fulfillment of Genesis 3:15, which is the Lord Jesus Christ who came into the world. He is the answer. And as long... And as long as that factor rests with Abraham and Isaac, and also He repeated the same thing with Jacob, as long as that factor agrees with them or applies to them, then there cannot be a perfect accord. The only way there could ever be a perfect Abraham accord would be for all of the Muslims to say, "Allah is not God. He is a false God, and we repent of Him, and we believe wholeheartedly in Jehovah God. We believe wholeheartedly in Jesus Christ." Then that can be an Abrahamic accord. But right now, there's too much difference between the two groups. Now, God loves the Mohammedans, and God will save Mohammedans. God has saved some Mohammedans. But even Israel right now has gone back to the land in unbelief. God has, in spite of that, saved some Israelites, or Israelis as they call them today. So we think about this. Now, turn, if you will please, send your Bible to the book of Isaiah, chapter number 51, and I want you and me to see where we fit into the pictures. What did the Bible say? "In thee shall..." How many families of the earth be blessed?
All.
"All families of the earth be blessed." Now, Isaiah, chapter 51, verse number 1. And write this reference down so you'll have it to refer to later. "Harken to me, ye that follow after righteousness, ye that seek the Lord." Has this described you? It has. It has described me, and it has described you. We follow after righteousness, and we seek the Lord. "Look unto the rock whence ye are hewn, and to the hole of the pit whence ye are digged." Look unto, what is that word? Abraham, your what? Your father. And unto Sarah that buried you. For I called him alone. He called Abraham out of early counties. He's the only one, as far as we know, that he did call, especially he is, we fully know, the one that he called for the specific purpose. "And blessed him and increased him." Now, turn to the book of Romans, chapter number 1. The book of Romans, chapter number 1. And here is a very familiar verse of scripture, verse number 16. "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ." Now, this, Genesis 3:15, at the time Paul is writing this, has already been gloriously and wonderfully fulfilled. "For it is the power of God on the salvation to everyone that believeth." To the Jew what? To the Jew first. The Lord Jesus said salvation is of the Jews. And one comment that I wanted to make earlier, and may have made it and just forgot about it. The key to understanding the prophetic Word of God in both Old and New Testaments is the nation of Israel. That is the key. God chose them to be a literary channel through which to give the Holy Scriptures, the Word of God. What will we do without the Holy Bible? God chose them to be a biological channel through which to give the seed, the Lord Jesus Christ, the Savior who shed His blood for us, without which there could be no other salvation. And He chose them for a future purpose of government in the will and in a reign in the future. "The power of God in salvation to everyone that believeth, to the Jew first and also to the Greek." Paul said to a group, "You have rejected my preaching on the Messiah ship of Jesus Christ. I'm going to return and preach to the Gentiles because they will believe." Now, verse number 17, Romans 1:17. "For therein is the righteousness of God revealed." What is the covenant that God has given to present-day believers in the Lord Jesus Christ? What is that covenant? It is that we have been substituted the righteousness of God. Our sinfulness has been removed, and our guilt and our stain, and God has put the righteousness of God in our hearts. Now, we cannot brag about being saved. We can praise for the fact that we are saved because it is His righteousness, not ours. The only thing that will take you and me to heaven is the righteousness of God. But having received that by faith, you and I have as much right to heaven as does the Lord Jesus Christ Himself. Just as Jesus Christ cannot go to hell, neither can we go to hell. Because God is not going to put us in hell because the righteousness of God is in us. But now, we're not through. Look at this. "Therein is the righteousness of God revealed," from faith to faith. Now, what does that mean? God has revealed His righteousness from faith to faith. This is from one faith to another faith. "As it is written, the just shall live by faith." Now, think about this. From Abraham's faith to Isaac's faith, the same faith. Isaac would not have had that promise repeated had he not been given to his dead. And from Isaac's faith to Jacob's faith, from faith to faith. Now, turn, if you will please, over to the... Over to the book of 2 Timothy, chapter 1. 2 Timothy, chapter 1, verse number 5. Now, here's a grandmother. Her name is Lois. And here's her daughter. Her name is Eunice. And here is Eunice's son. His name is Timothy. And notice what this says here. "When I call to remember is the unfeigned faith that is in thee." Now, he's talking about the faith that is in Timothy. But he gives the history of Timothy's faith. "Which dwelt first in my grandmother Lois." Now, this faith that is in Timothy was first recognized in his grandmother. He's talking about the faith and thy mother, Eunice. So the grandmother's faith was in the mother's faith, and Paul says that that faith was in Timothy. "And I am persuaded that in thee also." Now, let's trace this faith. It's in Abraham. That faith is now in Isaac, and that faith is now in Jacob. And that faith later was in Lois, and that faith was later in Eunice, and that faith was later in Timothy. From faith to faith. Now, there's so much can be said here. This is so glorious, to know what God has done for us. But also, it is an awesome responsibility. Now, I can look back as a little boy and see that my mother taught me about God. She led me to Christ. I am in the faith because under God, and according to the principles by which He works, my faith was first in my mother, but it's not a different faith. It's a different application, but it is the same faith that my mother had. My mother had the same faith that Jacob had, that Isaac had, that Abraham had. This is an amazing and wonderful thing. God made a specific promise to Abraham, to Isaac, and to Jacob. He did not make that promise to Ishmael. He made it to these three and their descendants. And it was culminated in the person of the Lord Jesus Christ and perpetuated in the life of other believers all the way up to July 26, 2025. And here we are this morning with the same faith, the same faith. Now, what is a Jew? A Jew is a descendant of the tribe of Judah. Abraham was a Jew, but he was not called a Jew. It's later after Judah is born, and after that tribe exists, and through that tribe, the Lord Jesus Christ came. The Lord Jesus Christ was a Jew. But at the time of the carrying away into Babylon, they weren't known as Jews. But from that experience, it was the tribe of Judah and the tribe of Benjamin that were taken away into Babylonian captivity. The other 10 tribes had already been dispersed by the Assyrians over 100 years before. Now, when we come to recognize that at that period of time, they began to be referred to as Jews because they were from the tribe of Judah. But the word has applied to all the other tribes of Israel, and today we just use it as a blank statement. Abraham was a Jew. Isaac was a Jew. Jacob was a Jew. But think about it. Ishmael was a son of Abraham, but he was not a Jew. There are two classes of people in the Bible, Jews and Gentiles. Why was it that Isaac was a Jew and Ishmael was not a Jew? Well, it gets deeper. There were... That was born to Isaac, twin boys. Esau and Jacob. And Jacob was a Jew. Esau was a Gentile. Now, how on earth can that possibly be? We come up with a question. What is a Jew? What constitutes a Jew? How can it be that Isaac was, and Ishmael wasn't, and Jacob was, and Esau wasn't? How can that be? The thing that constitutes a Jew as a Jew is the covenant that God made. God chose Abraham to be a blessing to all tribes of the earth. He repeated that promise to Isaac. The promise of God is what constitutes a Jew as a Jew. Now, if this is too deep for you, or, and by deep, I mean disagreeable, if you cannot agree with me, please let's still say, friends, I want to go to church with you tomorrow. This is the way I see it. But the wonderful thing it is, is that the righteousness of God is communicated from faith to faith. I thank God for my godly mother. Now, I need to back up and make an explanation. There are a lot of people that are born into the family of God who did not have a godly. In the faith, mother are dead. And so you maybe did not inherit your faith or inherit the opportunity to receive your faith like someone who had a godly mother or a godly daddy, such as I did. I started to say a while ago, when I was born, I was born into a home of a Bible-reading, praying, godly mother. That didn't save me. That put me in the position to hear and receive the Word of God. There were no doubts that were cast into my mind, so that when I heard the gospel later, I believed it. I received it. I didn't have any difficulty. There are many other people who have questions and doubts and frustrations, and we need to pray earnestly for them, that God will help them to come to another Lord as their Savior. But when I was born, I was born into a community that had a Baptist church, and my mother went to that church. That church didn't save me, but it increased my opportunities to hear the gospel. And not only that, there was a King James Version of the Word of God in our home. My mother read it every day on her knees with tears. That didn't save me, but it increased my opportunity to hear. I thank God for my opportunity. But I have known other people that, God in His marvelous grace, they did not have a godly heritage. They did not have a gospel heritage, did not have a Christian heritage, but God revealed grace to them, and they were saved. You want an example? Abraham, he was in early the childis. They worshiped the sun and the moon. But God, by His marvelous grace. Now, I know human responsibility is an innate thing with every individual, and I know the sovereignty of God that chose to save us. I cannot reconcile the two, and won't ever try to because I've read books, and I'm nobody that does. One day when we get to heaven, perhaps we'll understand, but until then, we trust the God who knows. We trust the God who knows. I guess it's time to apologize. I've got a lot more to say, but I will not belabor you with a thing this morning. I will like to ask you to pray and to read the rest of this book that you have here on prophecy and read all the way up through. I started off on page 14 this morning. Read all the way up through page 18. And in this book that you now, it starts off, it gives an overview of the Bible from Genesis to Revelation. Read the chapter on Genesis and the chapter on Exodus before next time. And I feel so guilty because we're passing over so much information. But if we're just going to get a basic working knowledge from Genesis to Revelation, we can't touch on everything. We have to pass over it. I just consider myself so blessed and so privileged that I have the opportunity to teach this class. And having said that, I need your prayers. Please pray for me that God will help me. I had a real struggle in preparing this lesson today. I've been working on it for two weeks, and so much that we're having to leave out. One thing of great interest in your book is page number 15, the prophecy of Jacob. And on this deathbed, Jacob prophesied about all 12 of his sons. And we have chosen just what he prophesied about Judah. We've ignored the other sons. And the reason is because Judah is the tribe from which came the Lord Jesus Christ. And each one of these statements, "Judah, thou art he whom my brother shall praise. Thy hand shall be in the neck of thy enemies. Thy father's children shall bow down before thee." Thy father's children shall bow down before thee." Judah is a lion's quip. "From thy prey, my son, thou art gone up. He stooped down, he couched as a lion, and as an old lion, who shall rouse him up? The scepter shall not depart from Judah, nor a lawgiver from between his feet, until shallow calm; and unto him shall be gathering of the people, binding his spool unto the vine, and his ass's coat unto the choist's line. He washed his garments in wine and his clothes in the garden of blood of grapes. His eyes shall be red with wine, and his teeth white with milk." And none of that had yet been fulfilled. This is a prophecy of the last words of Jacob before he died. And each one of those statements has a great prophetic significance. But we won't talk about it this morning. You've got your book, and you read it. And if you have questions, read it again. I bless you. You can tell your story now.